Good evening and welcome, everybody, to the City of Isani City Council Meeting for Tuesday, November 17th. Persistent to the Minnesota Statute 13D point 02, the public body has determined that the City of Isani Council will not be able to hold a meeting in person due to the pandemic COVID-19. Persistent to Minnesota Statute 13D point 021, the Isani City Council will be holding the City Council Meeting via telephone by using Zoom. The public can comment at the City Council Meeting by visiting the website that is listed, I believe, on our webpage, right? I think something like that, all right. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and if we could all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Doing roll call, all council members are present. Is there any public comment at this time? All right, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda from Councilman Collison and a second by Councilman Lundeen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Approval of the City Council Meetings for November 4th, which was a regular City Council Meeting, and October 6th, which was the Economic Development Authority Meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundeen and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Announcements. City offices are closed Thursday, November 26th, and Friday, November 27th, in observation of Thanksgiving Day and day after Thanksgiving. Park Recreation Culture Board Meeting will be Tuesday, November 26th, at 6:00 PM. City Council Meeting will be Tuesday, December 1st, at 7:00 PM, and EDA will immediately follow that City Council Meeting. Any council committee reports? None at this time. We'll move on to business items. K1, resolution approving certification of delinquent charges for city services collectible in 2021. Mr. Becker.
This is the annual assessment of delinquent utilities. This year, we've got a longer list and a higher dollar amount than in the past. We've kind of discussed it as we've gone along and decided that we're going to not do shut-offs and not charge penalties and things like this along the way. We kind of knew this would be the outcome, that we'd have a longer list and a higher dollar amount. So right now, we're looking at a list of, I think it's about 32.7 in delinquent charges. So, and a fair amount of that, even if council were to approve that list for certification payable in 2021, a fair number of those will pay before the end of November, before it even goes to the county, and a fair number additionally will pay before the end of the year, at which point I would update the county and those charges would never actually show up on their tax statement, so.
Any discussion on this item by the council? Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve this item from Councilman Lundeen and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to K2, sale of EDA and city land, PID number 16.029.1400 and 16.053.0151 to UPS. Ms. Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The EDA reviewed the purchase agreement at their last meeting and recommended approval. Per the city attorney, what we're looking to do is sell two parcels of land to UPS so they can expand, and during that process, what we need to do is have the EDA deed land over to the city, and the city will do the lot combination with UPS and sell it to them for their expansion. What you have before you tonight is the purchase agreement to do just that.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to... We have any... Any...
Discussion.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on this item? I have a motion to approve by Councilman Lundeen and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to K3.
Dan.
Oh, Dan's not even in the room. So it's four zero. Dan exited to use the restroom, sorry. K3 is the liquor store engineering and agricultural services proposal.
Architectural.
Architectural, sorry. Mr. Cook, I see you're online. Take this and run, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, this is the next step in this liquor store process, now that we have the land and have begun the survey on it. This is to do the design all the way through construction, I guess, as long as that's the process that we end up going. The fee proposals included in here are the ones from Bolton &amp; Mink for the design through bidding, as well as the, if the project moves forward, you know, site staking, management, and inspection through completion of the site. And then Brunton Architects is the architectural firm that we work with, have provided a fee proposal for more or less all the other engineering services, electrical, structural, mechanical, as well as interior design and conceptual layouts and things. We've already had a couple kickoff meetings, they understand what the goals are of the city. And I guess the only item that was brought up at the last meeting regarding a pitched roof, we've talked with them on what their estimates are, and essentially, what the numbers come back as is the actual cost to simply pitch the roof is maybe 150,000, but the elements that go along with that, where the HVAC now can't sit on the roof and it has to move into the building or adjacent to it, it just changes the site and all the engineering that goes along with it. So the total estimated cost is in the 250,000 to 300,000 range to make that change. Granted, you know, there are some benefits, you know, that go with that, but it's just an item that we wanted to bring up before we really started moving too far along in any concept, to make sure everybody's on the same page.
He's wrong. I tell you, he's wrong, Jason. That a pitched roof isn't going to... It's going to... A hot roof is going to cost a lot more money than that, trust me. And the HVAC equipment, air handlers can sit down on the ground behind a building and get inducted in that he's reaching to push something. I don't want to see a maintenance issue down the road. A flat roof in Minnesota is not a designed building roof. I don't care. I'm going to argue that till the day I die, and that HVAC equipment can sit elsewhere. It does not need to go on a roof. Ideally, it's easier to do. He's wrong. And I tell you what I would propose? I would propose we have someone, an HVAC company, do a design-build on that system and not pay this clown to design that. You're paying an engineer to pay a lot of money into something. I don't agree with it. I totally disagree with it. And I guarantee you, there's a lot of municipal buildings that have been built with design-build, and you're going to save a lot of money, plain and simple. I don't agree with that $300,000. Not at all.
Steve, I didn't understand one thing you said. You said something about the... Are you talking about the heating and air conditioning shouldn't sit on the roof?
He wants... They say to go to a pitched roof instead of a flat roof.
Okay.
All the HVAC equipment can't go on the roof then. Yes and no.
A lot of them would, a lot of them too, put them units on the roof because they don't have the space, like if you're downtown Minneapolis or whatever.
Yep.
Theft reasons, there's multiple reasons why they choose to put them on the roof, but they don't... In our situation, I don't feel that they would have.
No. And I'll tell you what, you can find plenty of HVAC and plumbing contractors that can do a design-build on this and make it work just fine. And they're the ones that are going to take the heat on that.
So...
If you ask for a design-build, they have to design it and it has to work.
So 192,000, they're asking to go to 300,000 just because of the roof, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So I guess this number isn't asking for additional fees, this is just saying what their total increase in project cost would be, including any fees, but that's just their, you know, ballpark number on the difference in cost from the base flat roof, not...
Materials, correct? Materials?
Is it materials, is what they're saying, or what are the... What's the increased cost here, Jason?
Right, no, so that's where, if you go to the second page of their proposal section, they have a paragraph written in there that's about the optional metal joist and standing seam metal roofing system, where they're basically saying that the construction costs with kind of the design elements of the different systems that would get involved, plus the actual cost of the roof, would be in that 200-plus thousand for the materials in those designs, and then they're saying another 36,000 would be the engineering fees that Councilmember Lundeen's referencing on, you know, whether or not an HVAC company would be able to, you know, do this design, but it's more or less the starting, you know, 200,000 number on if it increases the actual cost of the building, is that something the city would like to entertain. The other thing that Brunton did bring up is, on a flat roof, you can get extended insurance warranties on a flat roof at a not-too-high a price for a similar life expectancy, you know, where they could choose to go to a 20-year extended warranty on the roof for 30 years. Once you're trying to get into a 50-year, you know, warranty, you know, you're starting to get into a higher premium for insurance on it, or a warranty on it, but, you know, it can end up having similar warranties, I guess.
I guess I'm a little lost here, Jason, on the metal joists. Why wouldn't we use wood joists? I don't get that. To me, Jason, you've never heard me be anything other than just blunt with you and not sugarcoat, but whoever these people are sound like a bunch of yahoos, and I don't even know what I'm talking about. I mean, it's... I would lean on Councilman Lundeen because he does this day in and day out. I do know for a fact personally that a pitched roof would be better than a flat roof in Minnesota. I know for a fact he's not wrong about that. But now, for these guys to say that they want to do metal joists, not wood joists, that sounds a bit ridiculous. Am I wrong?
Well, if you do wood with a flat roof, flat roofs...
We're not talking about a flat roof.
I'm not going to use the metal joists for a pitched roof.
Yeah, you're going to use metal joists for a pitched roof?
I can take you down to a...
Oh, for a pitched roof, yeah.
I could take you down to YMCA buildings, wood trusses. They sheet it with plywood, they put their ice and water down, and it's a standing metal seam roof on top of it.
There you go.
For a lot less money. I could take you right down to it, it's down in Lakeville, and there ain't no metal trusses there. It's all wood.
Is this the same company that you always use, Jason?
Yeah, yep. And at this point, you know, this isn't a true topic, I guess, on whether we want to make a decision on it right now, isn't actually a necessity, you know? This isn't even part of the technical, you know, fee proposal, what we're even bringing here, it was just bringing up the discussion to continue from the last meeting when Councilmember Lundeen had brought it up. So we certainly can evaluate it in more detail and bring it back before any, you know, design has even proceeded, you know, where it would actually impact anything, but, you know, for the most part, it was trying to continue the conversation, and it sounds like we will want to.
The more I look into this, Jason, it just, to me, it's all about the money to these people. I'm blown away by this.
Mr. Becker, didn't Mr. Becker have a timetable on this? Like, we should put out bids here soon to get it built by, start having it built by spring or something?
Mr. Becker, you'd have to answer that question.
Did you say you wanted to have this bid out here?
By a certain time?
Yeah. As a general rule, if you're going to bid a project, you'd want to be bidding it in February, so you're awarding in March, April at the latest, just so that you're getting onto a contractor's schedule early in the year, you get a little favorable, a little favorable bid on that. If you wait until later in the year and say you decide you're not going to call for bids until, say, June or July, you could pretty well bet on a 15%, 20% extra on that bid.
Wow.
So what you're hearing here, is that going to get us into that February timetable?
I would say this, as much as I like the particular timetable, two weeks doesn't make or break anything, and it's better to get this right. If the council's not comfortable with this, then we ought to get comfortable.
Okay.
I'm not happy with their fee schedule either, Jason. I don't... Personally, gentlemen, I think we ought to postpone this.
For another date to discuss it.
For another date, so we can discuss this.
If we're not happy with it, then...
I am not happy with it at all, I could pick this apart.
I think there's things that you're not looking in here, and I, right now, I don't want to discuss it, other than those council members. And I think Ms. Wood already knows what I'm looking at, and you can understand why I want to discuss this further.
It's the same thing I'm looking at, I guarantee you.
Do you understand what I'm saying? I mean, I think this is, I think we can discuss this...
Have a call meeting, next call meeting.
Or some other time.
I think they're trying to rob us without a weapon, myself. This ought to be a crime.
You see what I'm talking about, Dan?
I'm trying to find it.
Here.
Go to...
If I can ask, Jason, what are our options for putting this out for other companies to give us your proposal?
Well, I guess we can put together a request for proposal from architectural firms, you know, that I guess in itself would have a fee with it, you know, to have to put together all the criteria to have them all bid it equally. I guess in just ballpark terms, their numbers, you know, are in the general industry standard on, you know, more or less 8% of the project cost when it comes in at. With that said, the actual total between Bolton &amp; Mink's fees and theirs is significantly less than we originally budgeted for. I mean, obviously, that doesn't sway anything specifically, but we actually are well over, I think, 20% under what was originally just earmarked for it. And like I say, this topic of a pitched roof or not, that number, the dollar amount, is not included in their numbers, so they weren't attempting to jack up the price to get more money. If anything, you know, the numbers are almost sounding as though it would be not recommended to do it or to pay them that money.
Mike, do you want to add something?
The only thing I should add is that the budget numbers that we've reviewed in the past on this project, my goal on all of those was always, I'm going to lay out what I believe to be the worst-case scenario, because I want to be able to prove that even in the worst-case scenario, we can still make this project work. So, yeah, they should be under what I had budgeted. They should be.
Well, they should be, Mr. Becker, but to me, it looks like they're teeter-tottering. To me, this looks like the worst-case scenario. I'd rather go out and have others bid on this, because I guarantee you, somebody's going to come in with a better offer than this. This just see, I mean, their fee schedule, all of their request services shall be billed at the following rates? Holy... I should have been...
Just going on that item, so what they actually are proposing is the lump sum number that's even just in my memo there, to cover every task that they'll do.
Yeah.
Jason, I think your internet is maybe lagging a little bit, so...
Those extra fees, if there is additional to...
Jason, can you hear me? You actually cut out, and I didn't hear anything you said. Your internet's either lagging or pausing, but we didn't hear anything you said.
All right.
So just from the point when you said that their actual total fee proposal within the memo is where we last heard you?
Okay, so all those billing rates and things are not in addition to their fee, that would just be if there was extra tasks that are asked of them outside of, you know, the scope that we've discussed and that they've laid out in their fee proposal. So there shouldn't be any expectation at this point that any of those would actually get individually used, their lump sum number. I had asked them to give the lump sum number instead of what their usual baseline is, is a percent of construction cost, and when you do fees in that way, the number can actually end up, you know, driving up the total project without being able to pre-authorize a total fixed cap, you know, to know what we're budgeting for.
So I guess my recommendation to the council would be that we just postpone this, and the reason for that is, I think, I don't think I'm the only one sitting here that's saying postpone this. The reason for this is I think there could be other options, Mr. Cook, and I'm not flawing you by all means, I just think that we were all in agreeance that we wanted this to be done fairly or at a reasonable, I guess I could put it, amount of building this, and that just blew me out of the water by seeing this. So I think tabling this so we can do a little more homework would be our best bet, or postponing would be the correct terminology.
I'd be curious to see what the fees were for when the city hall was built.
Architectural fees for city hall?
Well, there's going to be inflation on that, that was so long.
Well, yeah.
Right, but in comparison, this is a much bigger building.
Yeah, true.
But it's the same type of design, we'd like...
True.
We spoke about, you know...
Does this have a flat roof, or is this...
It's pitched roof.
This is a pitched roof?
I can research it.
I don't think we need to make a decision on this right now, is what I'm saying, Selman.
I agree.
So are we going to table it, is that what we're avoiding?
Postpone it.
Postpone it.
Till later date, till next meeting, and then we'll...
December.
Yeah.
Is there any interest from council? Do we want to move forward with having Mr. Cook prepare an RFP and pay those costs for that, or still not that yet either? If we're thinking of going out for bids, will you have all the project scope and everything put together for a request or proposal posted? Do we want to do that now? We can wait to decide that as well.
This is the Bolton &amp; Mink, correct?
I see.
It would be Bolton &amp; Mink to put the RFP together.
Yes. I think we have to do that, no matter what. And if we don't, if we decide that we want to go a different route on some of this, we're still going to have his RFP. They're still going to be involved at this in some level, no matter what.
Bolton &amp; Mink's going to, they're an engineer.
I know, but I'm just saying is...
We would have Bolton &amp; Mink's scope for engineering, but we're looking at doing an RFP for architectural design and the...
Yes, I think we do need to do that right now.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
The reason why I ask that question now is because that does add considerably a lot of time to our timetable, because once you draft an RFP, that still has to go to council for approval, and then it gets posted first, or no, it's a process with it, so that adds time.
How much time are we thinking here? Because I don't want to run out of Mr. Becker's window here either.
It will, I would say conservatively add at least one month, at the minimum.
I don't think we're pushing ourselves out on that. We'll still be doing this by the end of, first part of January, anyway.
A month should be okay, right, Mr. Becker?
I'd say that's at the minimum, but...
At the minimum?
I couldn't hear that.
If we were to push this out and take another month, that's not going to harm your window that you want to hit, is it?
It doesn't have to ruin the timeline, but eventually, we would get to a point where we would probably find it advantageous to just delay the whole thing a year. I'm not saying that's where we are at, but if we have delay, 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 but at the same time, at this point in time right now for this decision, I think the council needs to be comfortable and needs to be confident that they're getting it right, more than just getting it moving forward.
Yeah, and that's...
And that's where I want to be, I just want to make sure we're doing this right.
Right, and right now, I don't feel we're doing it right.
Yeah, I get the sense that the council isn't feel comfortable with this, and if that's the case, then we should choose a new path.
I think we should do the RFP, as Ms. Wood says, and we can discuss some of this further next council meeting.
I think I would feel more comfortable then to not postpone until the December 1st meeting for the RFP approval. Mr. Cook, did you have an estimate for that, did you say? Ballpark?
To put together the RFP, I guess, let me think about it. I guess if we already have the scope of what the expectations are for the general project, I mean, it's still, I guess, about $5,000 probably, once it's all said and done. Make sure all the wording's right, all the advertising, all the question responses, should be less than that, but somewhere in that ballpark.
Would you be able to, council voted on that tonight, would you be able to have that completed to be into the packet for the December 1st meeting? Or is that too short of a timeline for you?
I think so. What's the date for that packet?
December 1st.
Yeah, we have the holiday in there, so definitely, I think it's December 22nd. No, I mean, sorry, not December.
November.
November 22nd?
Looks like a Sunday.
November 4th.
24, Jason, November 24th.
All right. I can see what I can do. I guess I was going to be on vacation for the majority of that window, but...
Okay, then...
Then why don't we push it out until that later December meeting?
Okay, so, Mr. Cook, if you could get us your proposal for the December 1st meeting, so then we'll vote on it December 1st.
There we go.
And then we'll have a discussion. Look at that.
A proposal for the RFP, to do the RFP. Bring that on the first, yeah.
I don't, at the same time, Mr. Cook, I don't want to feel like we're...
Disrespecting you.
Disrespecting you or holding you at gunpoint, so to speak. I mean, I don't want to rush you, I don't want to disrespect you. I hope you would know that this council very much likes you and respects you, otherwise you wouldn't be wearing the shirt you're wearing right now.
That's right.
Yeah. So just note that, we just, we got to make sure we get this right. And I'm not saying it's you, and I'm not pointing a finger at you, and I'm not blaming you, but this doesn't look right. And it's not only me saying that, it's a few of us up here saying that. So with that being said, I would rather just slow down and make sure we get it right. And if you need more time, by all means, speak up, or swallow your pride, my friend.
No, and at this point, I mean, like you say, you know, this is a company that I work with a lot, but, you know, like you're saying, there's nothing that requires that you guys are using, you know, the subs, you know, the other engineering firms that I work with, you know? You know, it's not a requirement, so I don't, you know, I don't take it personally, and obviously, it's, like you say, if the timeline is going to be allowed to, you know, go alter those, you know, that's not a, you know, an issue on my end, I guess. It's, you know, the speed that we needed to go with to get that originally discussed, you know, attempt to be done by the end of, you know, fall of this coming year, I was just trying to put this together as fast as possible. If, you know, if this pushes it out a couple extra months, or, you know, whatever it turns out to be, and the council is comfortable with that, you know, then by all means, you know, follow your obvious recommendations, your desires, it's your city.
I make a motion to table or postpone.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundeen to postpone until our December 1st meeting with this item. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero to postpone until December... Motion carries five zero to postpone till December 1st.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Yep.
Do I have approval of the consent agenda, or any items on there that we'd like to discuss?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented by Councilman Lundin, and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Lundin.
Second.
Second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero, therefore, we stand adjourned.
Thank you.